Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the February 17th, 2021 meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission. First order is roll call. Let's go through that. Daniel Hilton.
Present.
Melanie Niski.
Present.
Thank you. Mark Bloomfield.
Present.
Sam Fitch.
Present.
Todd Quigley.
Present.
And Ann Goldfarb, present, not attending today. We have Gavin McMillan, Leishen Gargano, and Sam Libby. We have approval. We need to do approval of the minutes of the January 20th, 2021 Boulder County Planning Commissioners Meeting. Are there any additions or updates to those minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Commissioner Fitch, I will move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Commissioner. Second.
Thank you.
And the third and the fourth.
Okay, let's, let's do a roll call here real quickly. As, as to approval of the minutes of the January meeting of the Planning Commission, Daniel Hilton.
Hi.
Melanie Niski.
Hi.
Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Todd Quigley.
Hi.
Ann Goldfarb, I. The minutes are unanimously approved. We have staff updates. Kim Sanchez, do we have staff updates?
Yeah, this is Kim Sanchez, Deputy Director, Community Planning and Permitting. Good afternoon. We do have the commissioners, our newly elected officials that have asked to join your meeting today to introduce themselves. I see that we have Claire Levy on the call so far. I'm not sure if Marta's been able to join us. We just resent her invite in case she wasn't able to find it, but Claire, why don't you go ahead? Welcome.
You know, thank you, and thanks for giving Marta and me a few minutes on your agenda. We were just leaving a meeting and I, I ducked out two minutes early and she probably stayed for the whole thing, so it might take her a sec to get over here. But I didn't, all I wanted to do is just say hello. Thank you for your service to Boulder County. Tell you how interested I am in the work that you do. At one point, I was an Assistant County Attorney in Jefferson County and covering all the Planning Commission meetings was, was my beat. And, and representing the, the Planning Department and the Public Works and all the regulatory work that the county did. So I really took a keen interest in the work of the Planning Commission. And really, that's all I wanted to do is just say hello because, you know, were we in person, I would try to come to your meeting. I think it's important for us as county commissioners to know the work that the, the citizens, the residents of Boulder County are doing to help us do our job better. And we take your recommendations that you make to us on the matters that come before you. We take them very seriously. I know that you spend a lot of time listening to public testimony, reading the packets, thinking about it and, and making really considered thoughtful decisions. And that really helps us so that when, when we get those cases that do come to us after you've seen them, we know that there's been a good look at them. And if you recommend approval, or if you've come, you know, come up with some conditions that you think are appropriate, you know, I have confidence that, that those are really well founded. So I'm just here to thank you for your work, let you know who I am, tell you, I'm, would be happy to hear from you about any matters that pertain to the county planning or otherwise anytime. And fortunately, county email extensions are really easy and you probably know them already, but see libby@bouldercounty.org. So that's really it. And I, I wish I could stay a little bit longer and, and and, and just, you know, hear a little bit more about the work that you do. But we have this elected officials and department heads meeting going on right now. And we're going to be meeting with them about a survey, an all employee survey that was done earlier before Marta and I took office on racial equity, the work that the county's been doing within departments and just hearing the results of those survey, that survey and getting the response or the, the thoughts of from the elected officials and department heads about how to take that work and, and make sure that we do something meaningful with it and, and really continue that as a priority of the county. So that was my reason for being here. I, I don't know whether Marta's been able to get on. Yeah, I do want to stay for her comments. Maybe I can look at the participants, but I mean, while we wait for her, if, if anybody, if you want to have any questions for me, I don't see her. I'm happy to, to chat for a minute, but I also know you have an agenda that you need to get to and, and you're volunteering your time. So I don't want to take any more of your time than needed.
Thank you, Commissioner Libby. Is, are there any questions? Planning Commissioners, anything you want to discuss at this point with Commissioner Libby?
Commissioner Bloomfield, I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, nice to meet you.
Yeah. I can't, yeah, same, likewise, although not really meeting at some point.
Such as it is.
Yeah, such as it is. I, I hope, I hope we can meet at some point in the future. So, well, thank you for just letting me show up on your screen for a few minutes. And I think I will go ahead and get into the other meeting in case for some reason Marta was not able to join us here. So thanks again.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks very much.
Bye bye.
And we can give Marta some time at a future Planning Commission if she said she wasn't able to join today. So we'll, we'll make that happen.
Great. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Do we have further staff updates?
That was it.
Okay, great. So it looks like we have just one, one docket item today, and that is docket DC 20-004, Article 19, Cowood Fire Land Use Code text amendments. And do we have a presentation on that today here?
Hannah Hippley from the Community Planning and Permitting Department is going to present to you. So she is probably setting up right now. Hannah, if you want to go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Kim. Step one, unmute. Missed that. So I'm going to share my screen with you. Again, my name is Hannah Hippley. I'm with the Community Planning and Permitting Department, and we are going to review docket DC 200004, which is text, a text amendment to the land use code to add Article 19-400. And this will establish an interim permitting procedure for rebuilding structures destroyed by the Cowood Fire. There we go. The Cowood Fire began on Sunday, October 17th, 2020, and eventually impacted over 10,000 acres in Boulder County. This slide is showing you that fire perimeter. This fire was the largest in Boulder County history and did significant damage in to public lands, US Forest Service lands, and county open space lands. So this, this slide here is showing you the, again, the fire perimeter with the underlimit of the public lands. However, there was loss of private property primarily in Gear Canyon and in the Mountain Ridge and Foothills Ranch subdivisions. 20 residences were destroyed in the two subdivisions, 17 in Mountain Ridge and three in the Foothills Ranch subdivision. So you can see the cluster of red here on the eastern edge of the fire perimeter. And those are the Mountain Ridge and Foothills Ranch subdivisions. The purpose of this text amendment is to provide a streamlined process for property owners to rebuild within those two subdivisions. It's to focus us on the relevant issues within those subdivisions and provide a process that substitutes for site plan review. Under current regulations, property owners who want to build something different than what existed before the fire are required to go through the site plan review process. If folks are building exactly what they had before, they would not need the site plan review process. But we do know through talking with residences that many do want to make changes to the homes. And so this text amendment will provide them with that flexibility to rebuild something somewhat differently, something somewhat different and an improved structure subject to a county building permit review. While allowing the county to address the hazards that exist after a wildfire, the pre-existing geologic hazard in the area and other safety concerns. So this slide is showing you again the homes that were destroyed in Mountain Ridge and the Foothills Ranch subdivision. And on this side of the slide, what we're showing here, you hear is the landslide susceptibility designation in this area. We did have the state geologist come look at the area after the fire and the hazard concerns that we have are the continued landslide susceptibility, debris flow, rock slides and mudslides, which are more prevalent given the change in the landscape after the fire. And then, of course, our ongoing concerns for long-term wildfire mitigation in the area. So I am going to go through the proposed text amendments. I am open to having you ask, ask questions as we move through each piece, or if you want to stop and ask questions at the end. Either way, I think will be effective. The first part of the changes in the regulations is a minor update to the introduction of Article 19. And really what we're doing here is generalizing the last sentence. So this section does not need to be amended every time we add a subsection to Article 19. So this is just to strike out and replace at the bottom. Diving into the meat of the regulations, this portion A relates to the deconstruction and demolition permitting in the area. So county building codes right now require that foundational walls over six feet in height remaining after the fire obtain a deconstruction permit and are removed. What these regulations allow, in this case, is for property owners to leave the foundation after they've taken down the standing walls. We had heard from property owners that they might explore reusing those foundations. And this timeframe of a year allows folks to plan for rebuilding, have the foundation tested, and determine whether they can reuse it or not. We have written into the regulations some safety precautions, safety fencing around the perimeter and the mulching of disturbed areas that occurs after deconstruction happens. There is a time limit for this. However, we are asking that property owners obtain the deconstruction permit and remove the foundation within a year after that initial removal of the standing walls. There is an opportunity for an extension of this one-year period. The cross-out, strike-out that you see here is my correcting an error in the text. So that you'll see that a couple of other times in the presentation where I've caught some minor errors. And then the other thing that the section states is that other permitting requirements from, say, the Colorado Department of Public Health or the Building Division will continue to apply here.
Hannah, excuse me, this is Rick Hackitstaff. Your audio has started to get a little scratchy a minute ago. Could you just try turning your video off for a second to see if it improves? I'm not sure what's causing it, but I just wanted to see if we could possibly improve the audio quality.
Is that any better?
It does seem to be. Let's try it like this for a minute.
Okay. Moving forward, we move into a discussion about what's eligible to be constructed under this set of regulations. And again, because we know because we know folks might be rebuilding differently. And we know that there might be a need for ground-mounted accessory solar energy systems. In addition to the structure that was damaged or destroyed by the fire, these regulations will also capture accessory structures that are proposed as part of the rebuilding on the property and those ground-mounted accessory solar energy systems that would normally require a site plan review waiver. We will, as the code states here, look at the visual impacts of those ground-mounted solar energy systems through the building permit process. But otherwise, they would all come straight through a building permit review without any other separate land use review process. And again, there's a typo correction on this slide. Both of these subdivisions are well-established subdivisions. They have private driveways. And so we know that they all have a legal access. So we're clarifying in this section that we don't need that demonstrated. However, as applicants do rebuild, we are asking that existing accesses are reviewed and that folks attempt to bring those into greater compliance with the multimodal transportation standards. These standards were adopted after the subdivision was developed, so it's likely that the existing access points do not meet these standards. So we are not asking that the existing accesses be brought into full compliance, but that we make what strides we can. The portion in red here is new to this presentation and it's further clarification that if someone wants to relocate an access point and build a new one, they may do that, but we do want that new access point to be in compliance with the multimodal standards. And again, have that disturbance looked at through a geologic hazard study to make sure that any ground disturbance is going to be the hazard associated with that will be mitigated. And then we are have a long-term look at the overall subdivision road and to evaluate the safety of that road with the county engineer and the homeowners associations in the fire district to see if there may be general improvements to the shared road that needs to be made. This section here establishes the timeframe for owners to take advantage of this process. They must apply for a building permit by February 25th, 2023. So that's two years after the anticipated adoption of the regulations. Again, the director may extend this timeframe for up to a year. And once a building permit is issued, work can continue under the timelines provided for within the, the Boulder County Building Code. So it may take someone two years to pull a permit, but then if they continue to do work under that permit, it may take, you know, another year or so to actually complete the home. The bulk of the regulations are in this section E, as far as what we will be reviewing when we look at structures that are going to be built. And these really fall into sort of two categories. These first two sections here are things we traditionally think of as looking at through site plan review. So the residential floor area piece. What we are allowing here in the code is that people can add what they would have been able to add under our current regulations without triggering a site plan review. So they can either build up to 1,000 square feet or the size presumption for their neighborhood, whichever is less. And then two gets into the fact that we are allowing people through this process to change their home, you know, to redesign, do a different roof line, perhaps an orientation, a change in the number of stories, garage location, those sorts of things. But due to the increased visibility following the fire, we do have visual impact concerns. And actually, the visual impact concerns of this neighborhood go as far back as the original sketch plan. So we have incorporated a lot of our normal approaches to trying to mitigate visual impacts. Discussion about colors and exterior materials. The placement and use of glazing, exterior lighting, the use of topography to minimize structures. And then in the Mountain Ridge subdivision, these lots were specifically, had specific limitations under the original subdivision approval. So we included those in this set of regulations as well. This next segment for standards and requirements for eligible structures really starts to get into our safety concerns. So really looking at number three, the potential for debris flow, rock slides and mudslides and asking that folks have these risks evaluated, provide that to us in their building permit application. Number four is the requirement for soils and foundation investigation. Again, this was a requirement of the original subdivision. It's relatively standard in places where the, you know, where the soil structures kind of unknown and could be unusual. Number five is gets at the geologic hazard that exists in this area. The subdivisions were built on an ancient landslide. And so the locations, when they were viewed, were reviewed by the state geologist when we were up there, he felt comfortable that those locations had held up over time. And he didn't see any evidence of, you know, soil creep or that sort of thing. And he really recommended that we keep those locations, you know, because they have been demonstrated to, to be safe. So the location of the new structures, according to number five here, really requires that they be in the existing foundation footprint to the extent possible. Expansions beyond this would need to come with, again, a site-specific geologic hazard investigation. And having those recommendations by that geologist incorporated into the building permit. Six speaks to the continued long-term focus on wildfire mitigation and requires that all redevelopment obtain a wildfire partner certificate to complete the defensible space requirements of the building code. And seven requires property owners to re-vegetate and restore the property in conjunction with the reconstruction of the homes. Because the director will make a determination on these building permit applications and whether they are able to meet the standards in E, we have included an appeals process related to these determinations. And what we're proposing here is to use the process that we use for site plan review decisions, which has the Board of County Commissioners here, appeals. Section G clarifies how these regulations relate to other portions of the land use code. And additionally clarifies that we will be coordinating with public health to ensure that existing onsite wastewater systems are, you know, connected and repaired along with the home. And lastly, H is a section which clarifies the existing means for enforcement that continue to apply to this article. As we described in the staff report, we did analyze the criteria for a text amendment and have found these criteria to be met. And we are today recommending that you approve and recommend to the Board of County Commissioners the approval of this docket with the updates and edits provided by staff today. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to go back, answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments at this point for Hannah?
This is Commissioner Nasky. Hannah, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about, it sounds like there was a stakeholder meeting with the the neighborhood. Could you speak about that meeting a little bit?
Sure. Um, let's see. After the fire, you know, sort of general practice, there are community meetings. So I think I've attended all of those. There were a couple where we specifically discussed the regulations with folks and asked for their input and their insight onto, you know, into what they might want to do. We really were trying to match the regulations with what we thought folks might want to, want to do so that they could come through this process relatively simply. And then in addition to that, we sent out the survey to residents to try to, again, learn about what they might, when they might want to rebuild, what they might want to rebuild. And honestly, I think a lot of folks are still figuring that out. They certainly don't know for sure at this point in time. So we've tried to draft the regulations to be as flexible as we could.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I just want to say my past experience as a green building consultant and worked on the four mile fire, and I really appreciate staff's work on this. Because, you know, having worked with a number of clients trying to rebuild their homes, it's definitely a difficult process. It can be, it can take quite a while and I really appreciate the effort to streamline this, to give a little bit more flexibility. And I think that, you know, what, what I'm seeing here really does that pretty well. And on a personal note, I was, you know, a mile and a half from the left-hand fire evacuation zone. So definitely appreciate your work from, and then in that context as well. We can't hear you.
Sorry, unmute. In regard to access points, you, you indicated that you would like to see those brought into compliance with the multimodal transportation standards. What, what would that entail? Bringing those up to compliance? And it sounds like you're not going to require strict compliance. Is that correct?
Yes. I don't know if I'm still screen sharing, but I did flip back to that direction. Okay. What we are asking for applicants who are continuing to use their existing access points is for them to look at them and see if there are small improvements that can be made to bring them closer to meeting the multimodal transportation standards. So that can be access width. It could be clearance. It could be surfacing. It could be the existence of a turnaround for a fire truck. So it really could be any number of things. We really would need to look at each of them on a case-by-case basis and see where, first of all, the existing access points fail to meet the standards, and then if there's a way for that to be improved. If someone is relocating an access and choosing to create a new access point, for those, we are asking that they meet the county multimodal transportation standards in addition to doing that geologic hazard evaluation.
Okay. And was that, was that discussed in your And was that, was that discussed in your stakeholder meetings? And what was the response to that, if so?
So our stakeholder meetings did not go through the proposed regulations step by step like we have here today. So I have not heard feedback specific to this. The second point about relocation of an access is something that we did add in, in response to a question from someone who was considering doing so. So we know that folks may want to do that, and we wanted to add that possibility into these regulations.
Okay. And then somewhat related to that, you indicated that there could be improvements necessary to the shared road, road or roads. Who would bear the financial responsibility for that?
The, it's a private road.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay. So that answers that question. And then lastly, what is, what does the wildlife partner's certificate require?
Wildfire partners.
A wildfire, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes. So wildfire partners is our program that has our staff at the county collaborate with the homeowner to create a plan for defensible space around their house. And that is in the end with the certification. When they receive certification, it means that they've done, implemented all steps of that plan. So it can be tree clearing. Some of the other items that come up are often having a, like a rock perimeter around the home. So it's really intended to prevent homes from catching on fire.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other questions or comments at this point, commissioners? All right. Hearing none, it looks like we have several people who have signed up to speak. Each of you will have three minutes. Are we, are we keeping time?
This is Anna Milner's staff, yes.
Okay. So you'll each be given three minutes to speak. And the first speaker we have today is Peter Siemens. Peter, are you present?
We need to ask them to identify themselves and their address.
Yeah, we will.
Mr. Siemens, this is Anna Milner's staff. You've been promoted to panelist, so you should be able to speak. I see that you're unmuted.
Are you there, Mr. Siemens? All right, for now, let's go to our second speaker. And each, each of you, as you speak, will be asked to identify yourself by name and address. The second speaker we have listed is Edward Yagi. Mr. Yagi, are you present?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, so you, if you could identify yourself by, give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak.
All right, do I have a video?
I see your name here on my screen. And that's all I see.
You should be able to share your video, Mr. Yagi, by clicking the start video button at the bottom, bottom left of your screen there.
I have to, I have to adjust my screen there. Okay.
There you go. Now we can see you. You're now on video.
Very good, thank you. Just, yeah, good day. My name is Edward Yagi. I'm a resident of Cheyenne, Wyoming, County Tupper. Being co-owner of property in the Allen's Park area that has been in my family for more than 100 years. I'm joining you today from Japan, both due to COVID-19 and also for graduate study. I am speaking today with two comments and one question. First, I cannot speak with any authority to what the county considers its biggest or most, or most urgent problem, as I lack the relevant information to even guess. However, I can say without question that the biggest problem facing the unincorporated areas is the threat of catastrophic fire. My own property, which I co-own with my family, is located at 1515 Big Owl Road in the Allen's Park area. I have no objection to the subject under discussion in any way. Improve the fire management posture of our unincorporated areas be taken into account. Second, Boulder County does not make entirely clear why some subjects like this one require a public hearing and others do not. Nor has the county made clear that public hearing comments play any part in the decision-making process. Urgent and considerable reform regarding both of these issues is needed. Finally, I sent an email to multiple Boulder County officials, including the commissioners, at the end of December. To date, I have received no response despite resending this email two more times in January and February. Multiple out-of-office messages all three times is evidence that these messages were received by the intended recipients. These emails raise legitimate evidence-based issues of misconduct by several county employees and officials. My question is, why has Boulder County not replied to my inquiries, and when will it do so? Thank you.
Hi, Chair Goldfarb. This is Anna Milner's staff. My apologies, I believe you're on mute.
Sorry, sorry about that. Trying to get back into the swing of things. Our next listed speaker is John Stevens. John, are you present?
Anna Milner's staff, again, Mr. Stevens, we see you've called in, and I believe you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Mr. Stevens, are you there? Hannah, shall we move on to our next speaker and see if we can get Mr. Stevens?
Sure.
Okay. So it looks like we had one other speaker who signed up just today, Gabriel Lee. Is that correct? Not able to speak. I'm not sure. I see a message here from Gabriel Lee saying that he's not able to speak. Maybe I can speak for him. I don't know who he is referring to.
Gabriel Lee, you have now been promoted to panelist and can speak if you'd like.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak for a minute. I'm under contract for a 91612, 9612 Mountain Ridge. But I can also speak for Peter Siemens. He had a question about, actually, Peter, if you're, I can pipe you in if you want to ask your question here. Maybe that'll work. Peter, they could probably hear you if you start talking now.
Okay.
Wait, let's, wait, just a moment, please, just a moment. Hello, this is, this is Ann Goldfarb speaking. Mr. Lee, we need you to identify yourself by name and address. And you can go ahead and speak, and then we will go back to Mr. Siemens if he would like to speak after you've finished. Just so we can, this is an orderly procedure.
Sure, sorry. I was, I was going to speak just because I can, he's having some audio issues. And so I was simply going to let him use my line to speak his scene. So, but I can, I can take his question and ask the same question if that's what you would prefer.
Whatever you would like to do. We just need to let you have an opportunity, and then when you've finished, we can let him have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, then, yeah, I have a quick question. Hold on just a second. I'm wondering if, what, if you have more specifics on the road inside of the division, because the homeowners are going to be paying for it, are there any additional kind of rules or regulations that we have, even though it is private property? So whether it's just the entrance or the overall, you know, access points and so on? If there's something that you can send us or point us in the right direction?
Okay. All right. Then let's go back to Mr. Siemens at this point. Is there anything that you would like to say at this point? If so, could you please identify yourself by name and address?
That's the thing. He, he's having audio issues. So I have him, I have him on the other line. That's, so he does have a question, but he's not going to be able to answer, ask it himself because of the audio issues.
Okay.
We were able to hear him when you patched him through.
Yeah. Yeah, we did hear him briefly. That's why I asked you to take turns in speaking. So we were hearing him.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Does he want to try and make his comments?
A, I am curious about more specificity on the road since any improvements are going to be paid for by the homeowners. B, I am curious about
Excuse me, excuse me, could you, we need to, we need to have your name and address, just for the record, before you go ahead and let us know what you'd like to say, please.
Peter Stevens, 9578 Mountain Ridge Drive.
Great, thank you. Go ahead now. And you have three minutes.
A, I am curious about specificities relative to the improvement of the, the road since obviously the homeowners will be paying for that. B, I am curious about what the timeline might look like from submission of application to permit to the time the permit is approved, if we meet all the guidelines of the permit. And C, I'm curious about when you, you know, you mentioned some oversight about exterior building materials and so on, and, and natural and dark earth tones and whatnot. So wondering how that would be relative to the use of metal on the exterior of the home. Means you can't use lighter tones. Specifically also, the entire back of my home was glass. So I'm not a glass expert, and I don't understand about non-reflective and so on. And I know glass is a lot different than when, than when my home was built. But most of the back, most of the east-facing portion of my home was floor-to-ceiling glass. And obviously you like to have that to get views. So those are my specific questions.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the list of speakers that I'm aware of. Do we have any others who are here today who would like to speak, who have not yet signed up? Hannah, are you aware of any other potential speakers?
This is Anna Milner. No, I am not. However, I do see that Mr. Stevens is still dialed in.
Okay.
Mr. Stevens, I have adjusted your permissions again. If you'd be willing to try and press star six for us to unmute yourself and speak, you should be able to do that. And I'm still not seeing that Mr. Stevens is unmuted. So I will continue to try and resolve that outside the meeting.
Okay.
Goldfarb.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so Hannah, at this point, do you have any comments that you would like to make in response to what we've heard from the speakers today?
I can make a couple of comments. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to answer all their questions, probably to their satisfaction. In response to the first speaker, I, I really can't speak to either of his comments about the email to the commissioners. The one thing I did want to mention is that the county land use code for land use matters does lay out in those rules and processes in the land use code, which items go to public hearing and which do not. So that is in that document for public review. There, the question about the subdivision road, I, again, I don't have a great answer because we have not been able to take a look at that road at this point in time. So I, what the regulations propose is sort of a holistic look at it with the HOA, the Fire District, our engineering staff to see if there are improvements that will make that road safer. Again, I don't have a timeline for that or really specifics that were requested. The timeline of a building permit review, again, I do not have specifics on that. I think, you know, that might depend on a case-by-case basis. And the level of complexity of the review, you know, if we have a proposal that's using the same footprint, the same access point, you know, generally the same kind of bulk and mass as before. That might be a more straightforward review than someone who wants to move the access point, really change the home. So again, I don't know that I can give a timeline for the building permit review. And then again, a review of those specific items for visibility and mitigation of visual impacts would occur during that building permit review. I don't know if, Mike, are you still on the call? I don't know if you have any additional comments about the road or?
Yes, I am. It's Mike Thomas, county engineer. What you said, Hannah, was correct in that it needs to be looked at holistically, along with the, the HOA and residents, as well as the Fire District. There really is not a, there shouldn't be a whole lot to look at. I don't, I don't recall that there was a lot with the road that really needed a lot of change, but that's something we would need to look at in the field with those concerned residents involved, as well as the Fire District. And we can make those determinations at that time as to what else may be needed.
And this is Kim Sanchez. I can add a couple of other things if I might. I guess I want to take a step back and just remind the planning commission and the residents of, in the fire area that the intent behind these regulations is really to help facilitate rebuilding in a way that really focuses only on the relevant issues rather than requiring the full site plan review process where we look at a number of things. So the whole reason we designed this set of regulations is to try to make things easier for them to rebuild and get back into their homes, if that's what they want to do. That said, we know that not everyone is going to choose to rebuild. And so these regulations do transfer with the property. So whether it's the original property owner whose home was lost, or if they sell to somebody and a new owner comes in to build on that lot, these regulations will apply within the two-year time span as, as proposed. But it's, it's really to get a balance of trying to make things, you know, easy for somebody to go through a rebuilding process while at the same time recognizing that there are certain concerns that the county wants to make sure that we weigh in on and evaluate. Things like the, you know, the geologic hazard issues, wildfire mitigation, access, and those, those sorts of things. So just like all of our analyses and evaluations, things are done on a site-specific basis. So it's, it's difficult to tell, you know, a particular property owner what improvements may be required to their particular access or driveway. But those would be things that we look at with them through our review. As Mike and Hannah both noted, you know, these are existing driveways. And so there's, there's likely not going to be a significant you know, significant number of improvements that do need to be done to their individual driveways. On the shared road within the subdivision, the the improvements that we want to consider making to those, which likely the HOA would, you know, coordinate with us on or Road Association, whatever is in place in this area, would be, you know, creating adequate turnouts or pullouts for somebody to escape. Because what we did notice when people and the residents could speak to this as well is when people were trying to evacuate that neighborhood, it was it was challenging to get out of there. And so we want to make sure that in the case of an emergencies, there are pullouts for people to safely access and for, you know, emergency vehicles to to get in and out as well. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking at for long-term rebuilding. But, you know, one thing that I would suggest, and I just sent an email to Gary Samfasan, who's the the fire recovery manager for the county, is we would be happy to again, meet with with residents. So we we met with them briefly, letting them know that, you know, hey, these regulations are coming, and this is our intent is to help you. We haven't gone over the details of everything like Hannah said. And so, you know, we're on a tight timeline because we want to make these available to people as quickly as as they can utilize them. But we want to make sure that they have an understanding and that they have opportunity to ask questions that they may have. So we will see if we can arrange a time to meet again via Zoom with homeowners in the area so that they have opportunity to ask questions about the regulations and the detailed things like Mr. Siemens was asking in a venue outside of the planning commission hearing where they, you know, have the three minutes, and we're in a more kind of formal setting about weighing in about the comments. So we can we can try to do that. This is going to the Board of County Commissioners on the 25th. So we're going to be we're going to need to try to find a time in between the two hearings to do that. But we'll do our best to try to make that happen. And and I guess I would just speak to the property owners also that if if you do have questions about how these might apply to you or just questions in general or suggestions about them, Hannah and I are both open, and you can reach out to us via email or phone call. We can have Teams meetings or Zoom meeting to to talk to individual property owners about any questions they may have. So. Yes, so I think that that concludes kind of what I was what I wanted to say. I guess the timeline would be the other thing. You know, typically, a site plan review process is about four to six weeks to get through the review process. We're trying to shorten that. So we want to just look at the things that we need to look at. We can't make promises, there's not a codified, oh, this is a 28-day review process. But we want to do it quickly and make sure that people can get their building permits as quickly as as they can. And for homeowners that are trying to rebuild and and get back and resume their lives, because we know this is a major disruption to, you know, day-to-day, you know, day-to-day circumstances, we want to help facilitate that and make things go as as quickly as we can. So that is the intent, but no formal timeline around that as proposed.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think that it sounds like that would be helpful if if that if you could speak with homeowners in a more informal setting where you do have the opportunity for some back and forth. So it sounds like that would be good if you can get that worked out in the next week here, I guess it is. Right?
Right, and you know, worst-case scenario, if we if we need to schedule, if we need to table the the hearing on the 25th to allow homeowners who will be affected by these regulations, a deeper understanding of them, we can do that. The reason we we scheduled things so tightly is just to to try to have a final product for people to be able to use as soon as they as soon as they could.
Great, okay, that sounds good. All right. Then any other questions or comments from commissioners at this time? For? Any staff members? All right, hearing none, I'll open it up to discussion then among the commissioners in regard to the the proposed passage of this. Does anyone have any comments?
Commissioner Bloomfield. I think, you know, hearing hearing the public testimony, one one thing that occurs to me is it seems like there's a lot of flexibility in terms of particularly like the bringing the road changes up to code. So it seems to me like, like, yes, there should be a discussion with the with the public, with the homeowners. But I feel pretty comfortable that there's the flexibility that we can we can make the subdivision safer for for egress particularly, and hopefully do that without incurring, you know, too much cost. It seems like the the director has enough has a lot of flexibility there. So. I think that that seems like a in the interest of keeping things moving forward, it seems like they could move forward and still get public input.
Commissioner Goldfarb, this is Eric Rogers, Assistant County Attorney. I may have missed it, but I didn't catch the if you closed the public hearing portion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Were there any further comments by speakers? Members of the public?
This is Anna Milner's staff. I don't see that anyone additional has signed up to speak, but I would like to give Mr. Stevens one more chance to hang up and dial back in just to try for your phone, if that's possible. And then anyone else additional, if you need to, if you have any inclination, now's the time. Sign up in the chat, please, address and name.
Let's see, have we have we heard from Mr. Stevens in the chat here in regard to whether he's able to get through, I'm looking. I don't really see anything from him here.
No, we have not, sure, Goldfarb, he is dialed in on the phone.
Okay. Well, I think. At this point, I'm I'm inclined to to close public comment. I think we've given him, it's unfortunate, but we've given him ample opportunity to to get through to us. I don't know, I feel a little uncomfortable doing it this way. But on the other hand, we do need to close public comment at some point to move forward with discussion.
Reopen it, right?
Yes, that's what I'm thinking that we would. If we do get him through, Anna, could you let us know? And then we we will reopen and give him an opportunity. But in the meantime, go ahead and and move forward with discussion among the commissioners on this.
And Commissioner Goldfarb, for what it's worth, we have been in touch with Mr. Stevens, and so staff can reach out to him to make sure that he's set up for the Board of County Commissioners hearing and to answer any questions that he may have also.
Okay, very good, that sounds good. All right, so so we will be closing public comment at this time and moving on to discussion by the commissioners. So we heard from Commissioner Bloomfield, is there anyone else who would like to make any comments at this point?
This is Commissioner Neski. I just wanted to sort of reiterate what Commissioner Bloomfield mentioned in the beginning. I thought that the changes to the regulations were really thoughtful. It seems like a lot was learned in the four-mile fire regulations that were put in place, and you were able to do it pretty quickly and streamline it for current residents. I really like the fact that, you know, obviously, there are a lot of changes to the landscape, but you considered keeping the building envelope and allowing homeowners opportunity to make building improvements for more energy efficiency. So I really think that there's a lot of flexibility, but a lot of guidelines in moving forward and the rebuilding process. So I really appreciate it. If Commissioner Bloomfield had any additional comments on from a, you know, from a rebuilding standpoint or from your perspective of being in the mountains, I'm open to hearing some more background on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Bloomfield, anything further?
Thanks for the invitation. I mean, I think that from a from a building standpoint, giving the flexibility to, you know, make some changes, obviously, anybody, if they had the opportunity to rebuild their house, they want to, they're going to want to improve it and make it make it make some changes, make some differences. And I feel like it's it's been done in a way that allows for that flexibility while still maintaining the the overall goals of the land use code and the complaint and all of that. So I think that's really good. And, yeah, no, I just, I, again, as someone who lives up here, and, you know, I did have my car packed for about four days, ready to go in, you know, 10 minutes or so. It's definitely appreciated that that attention is being given to these kind of things and sort of streamline things as much as possible.
Thank you. Yeah, I was impressed that this is Commissioner Goldfarb. I was impressed with staff's willingness to attempt to move quickly, yet be flexible in these regulations and really work with residents in the area. And it sounds like that that will be ongoing. So I think that, as I say, I'm impressed with with the work that's been done. And and I think I'll continue to be impressed with the work that will go on in the future to to help residents in in moving forward with rebuilding or whatever it is that they might, they might decide to do and whatever they might need. So I think that these are, given the circumstances, these are these are well drafted, and I'm certainly in favor of voting to to approve them. Other discussion?
This is Commissioner Hilton. I also believe these amendments are beneficial, and they do meet the criteria for amendment. I think think that streamlining will help with the specific impacted community. And I think that the county's oversight is still maintained and appropriate, so I support the amendments.
Anyone else? Hearing no further comments, I'm going to go ahead and close discussion at this point among commissioners and would ask whether anyone is willing to make a motion at this point in regard to approval of docket number DC 20 dash 0004.
Commissioner Bloomfield, I'm happy to. Ready for me?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the planning commission approve and recommend to the board Board of County Commissioners approval of docket DC dash 20 dash 0004 Cowood Fire Land Use Code text amendment, including all of the typo corrections that were that were in the document that we reviewed.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion or amendment to the motion that's been made? Would do we need to add language in regard to what the staff recommendation has been that the language that we certify the docket for action to the Board of County Commissioners includes the approved text? Do we need that additional language for this?
You do, and I would also suggest that you include the amendment that Hannah offered today about the driveways, because that wasn't in the draft that you saw but was presented to you live.
Okay, so the amendment regarding the driveways was. Can you remind us of that? So we can.
Hannah, can you chime in on that?
Yes, it's the relocation of an access may occur provided the new access point is in compliance with the Boulder County multimodal transportation standards. And if a site-specific geologic hazard investigation performed by an appropriate licensed professional sufficiently demonstrates that the existing geologic hazards have been mitigated, you could potentially simplify and recommend approval of the text amendments as presented to you by staff today. So that will capture all of the little typos and that additional piece.
Okay. All right.
Should I just amend my motion then, I guess?
That would be that would be fine.
So this is Commissioner Bloomfield. I will amend my motion to move that the planning commission approve and recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of docket DC dash 20 dash 0004 Cowood Fire Land Use Code text amendment and certify the docket for action to the Board of County Commissioners, which certification includes the approved text of the docket, including the modifications that were presented to us today in staff presentation. They got that?
And I think you need to continue that with and the official record of the docket before the planning commission.
Oh.
Just so we get that specific language.
Okay, so which certification includes the approved text of the docket and the official record of the docket for the planning commission, including staff comments and materials, public testimony, and planning commission action and discussion?
Okay, great. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Neski, I'll second. Thanks for taking that one.
Okay. All right, and again, any further discussion? All right, hearing let none, let's take a vote. Daniel Hilton.
Aye.
Melanie Neski.
Aye.
Mark Bloomfield.
Aye.
Sam Fitch. Sam Fitch.
Seem to be muted.
Sam, you might be on mute. Did we lose Sam? Let me move on to Todd Quigley.
Yeah, aye.
All right, and back to Sam Fitch. Ann Goldfarb votes aye. And Sam Fitch. We can't seem to.
Can you maybe give us a thumbs up, Sam?
I can't see him.
Noting noting for the record that Sam Fitch has given a thumbs up on video.
Great, okay, so we that that will serve as approval from Sam Fitch then. So we have unanimous approval then of docket number DC 20 dash 0004. Thank you, Hannah, for your work on this, appreciated, and you too, Kim.
Thank you.
Do we do we have any further matters that need to come before the commission at this time?
That's it, commissioners.
Great, hearing none, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Commissioner Bloomfield, I move to close the meeting.
And a second?
Commissioner Neski, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thumbs up?
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks all, thanks very much.
Thank you, Anne, thank you, everybody.
Yep.
Thank you.